I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in its power.
Mr. Zarzaki, will you call roll, please?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick and Mr. Cruzno are absent with notice.
Correct.
Mr. Iquinto?
Here.
Ms. Infante?
Here.
Mr. Speaker?
Here.
And I'll tell the way to the president.
Thank you. Everybody received copy of the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll support. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Call to the public. Anybody wish to address the planning commission?
No, I just want to say hi. I'm coming, I'm new in town, and I just came to visit faces. We get involved in a big lot of this, and I'm just wondering about the time that we've been evacuated.
Thank you for attending. Seeing there's no others, clarifications from the commissioners, are there any? Seeing none, we'll move on. Correspondence, Ms. Bird, I don't believe there is any. Thank you. There's no public hearing tonight. Item nine, reports of committees. Board of trustees sent in Ms. Chick's absence. She did forward me her report of the board of trustees' report, and I will let Mr. Zarzaki read Ms. Chick's report.
The board of trustees met on April 25th.
Board of trustees met on April 25th. The Wayne County...
Washtenaw.
Oh, Washtenaw. The Washtenaw County Road Commission made their annual presentation on the condition of the roads in Northfield and recommended some of the roads need detention and the related costs. They are also asking for suggestions from the township. Mr. Harmon also presented the option of assessing a millage to provide funding for road repairs and maintenance. The township will be required to match funds with the road commission for any road projects done this year. The board approved hiring Yvette Patrick as township controller. She will start in about a week. The board approved the township manager job description. Township received a total of forty resumes for the position of township manager. Board members submitted their top picks to Jennifer Castile, and the final top ten of candidates received the most approval from the board. Members will be discussed at a special meeting on Thursday tomorrow. The resolution for the Whitmore Lake weed control SAD was also approved.
Thank you. We'll move on to ZBA report. Ms. Stephens, any?
There is no report.
Thank you. Staff report, Ms. Bird. Move on to the planning consultant report, Mr. Sloan.
Nothing outside of the agenda.
Thank you. Parks and Recs report, Mr. Iquinto.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to mention that the community garden, we have created twenty additional boxes, so that will be a total of forty boxes that are available to residents. If you would like a box in the community garden, which is directly across from the community center, please call Jennifer Carlisle at (734) 449-2880 and submit your name to her. They are free to Northfield Township residents and a $25 charge to non-residents if the boxes are available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iquinto. We'll move to unfinished business. Item 10, a further discussion of McKenna master plan tasks and budget costs. We received the report in the packet, and I believe it's the same report as from last meeting. Am I correct, Mr. Sloan?
That's correct.
Since no changes, do you have anything further that you may want to add or before we commence discussion?
No, I think we had a good discussion at the last meeting, and I think, you know, based on all the comments, I'm not sure we had a consensus going forward, which is why I didn't produce any updated documents, just to kind of continue the discussion that we left off with.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would like to, I'll initiate discussion on the item. I looked, I did my homework. I looked at it long and hard the past couple of weeks. Basically, I'm looking at page four on the fees and the tasks, just to condense it, because we don't really need to revisit the whole proposal again. We did that last time. The general updates, I think, is very important. The master plan itself does have some dated information. Many things have changed in the past five years. I indicated that last time. So I think it's very important to do a general update. A non-motorized plan, I think it is important to have that, and possibly if it comes to a cost issue, perhaps the board of trustees may want to look at staggering doing it time-wise, but as compared to the general update, I think it's very important that we initiate that and get it updated. Reason being, you get developers coming in, they're looking at the master plan, you want an updated document, you want something that looks, you know, appealing and up to date, so I think it's important. The open space preservation plan, I don't see a great need at this time as far as our task is concerned. There is the preservation group, the agricultural and preservation group that was formed. I'm sure this is going to be one of their items that they're going to discuss. I understand that if a plan of that type does develop, the planning commission would have to look at that, but for the time being, I don't see it as a near-sighted goal at this time, so I wouldn't mind, you know, backing that off of the proposal at this time. Whitmore Lake Downtown Strategic Plan, we know that's being looked at by the Downtown Development Group, and I believe they're handling the budget part of that. Public participation, so if we were going to look at just a basic general update with the possibility of a non-motorized plan, maybe not right away, but in the near future, I don't see that we would need the use of an online survey. There's a lot of discussion last meeting. Some of the commissioners had opinions opposing the online survey for various reasons, but I do believe at least one workshop would be in order to gain any input if there is a motorized, non-motorized plan or any other issues. So that's my take on the proposal by Mr. Sloan. I would like to hear at this time other discussion comments from other commissioners, and perhaps just, Mr. Iquinto will be next. But my goal that I'm looking for tonight would be to come to a general consensus. If Mr. Sloan wishes to revamp his proposal, that's fine, but I would like to forward some type of request to the board of trustees so that we can initiate this, because it's going to take another piece of time at their level. So, Mr. Iquinto.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with the general updates and item number two, the non-motorized plan. One of the items that the Parks and Rec Committee is working on is, we picked again six items this year to focus on and that help move forward, and one of those items is tying in the non-motorized existing paths that are to our border to the west and to the east on the northern side, and then also from the southern side of Ann Arbor. And that's why I was asking the questions in the last meeting. The first truly step and the only first step is to have a plan to know where the proper locations are to tie those in throughout the community. And when Mr. Sloan stated that, and I believe he did state that you're, for this fee, you guys would be looking at it and you would come up with the locations of the proper pathways to tie all of that in throughout Northfield Township. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct, including any alternatives that may come up.
Yes. So that is something that would greatly assist the Parks and Rec Committee to have that done as part of the update. And then I would also be very supportive of the $1,000 workshop and eliminating the online survey for the reasons that I mentioned in the last meeting. So that would be a total of $24,500, if I'm adding it correctly, the $19,45 and $1,000. So that's exactly what I am in favor of. Thank you.
The commissioners?
Ms. Stephens?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Sloan. First of all, in regards to a complete street plan, is it enough for us just to insert into the master plan something that touches on complete streets, or is that being folded into the non-motorized plan? How does that all work together?
Currently, the master plan does have supportive language for complete streets, which is excellent, and it has also references, including a map from the 2006 Non-Motorized Plan of Washtenaw County, which is also excellent. What we seek to do is to first update any of the county information that could be coming along. Watts is currently in the process of doing a 2040 long-range plan, so we want to include any of that information that could help Northfield Township, as well as to take the next steps from the current master plan and really look at what our neighbors are doing, what's imminent, what we should be specifically planning for in the future. It's one thing where there may be a county agency or a regional agency showing a trail going through Northfield Township, but we want to go through the process of looking at ourselves and seeing what are the best links for Northfield Township, both in the region and within the township.
Thanks. And then, and it's not in the work plan, but I know we've discussed it before, the sign ordinance. In my view, it's imperative that we address that sooner rather than later. I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel about that, but I do have some concern about the sign ordinance. And I expect that within a work plan for the sign ordinance, we would want to do some public outreach to businesses and that type of thing. I don't know, you know, I'm looking ahead to the cost of doing that. I don't want to put you on the spot, but talk to me about the sign ordinance, the time, the length, undertaking such a project. Could that be done concurrently with what is in the master plan work plan? How does that fit together?
I think it could be concurrent. It could actually be done sooner. The master plan would be a longer process, but in terms of looking at the signed ordinance, that can be done sooner. Actually, I think it was at the last meeting trustee Chick had mentioned having the sign ordinance at a future planning commission meeting. And I think perhaps at the next planning commission meeting, we can prepare just a short letter of what the major issues are, not just with, you know, content neutrality, but also the proliferation of temporary signs and other types of signs that, you know, we can sometimes think of as nuisances. And not really do an in-depth review, but just some of the issues as we see them, and perhaps a schedule and proposal going forward in terms of what it would take to get through the ordinance. In some cases, there's public participation; in other cases, it's just diagnosing the things that we know are obvious problems and leaving much the rest alone, as long as it doesn't create any kind of legal challenges. So we'll have something at the next planning commission meeting on that, that I'll start getting that ball rolling.
And to add, Ms. Stephens, that actual ordinance work, we can start looking at, we can make alterations on that anytime, and this being more based towards a master plan?
Yeah, I was just thinking, cost, you know, how is it all going to, you know, work together?
Right.
Since our last planning commission meeting, I have rethought, and I agree that the general update should certainly be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Infante?
I'm glad you brought up the ordinance issue, because my concern is definitely item number one, I completely agree, and I think that goes almost without saying, the general updates are really important. I start to get a little bit confused when I get to the non-motorized plan and even the public outreach, because at the DDA meeting, they made it clear that they're going, and they did, contract McKenna for four public outreach events, two workshops, a survey, and a pop-up event. And they're asking many of the same questions that we're asking, and I'm concerned about redundancy, and I'm also concerned that the DDA, I know, budgeted for that, and would we want to perhaps save this money to do a public outreach for the signage issue, for example? So I'm a little concerned about the way Ms. Stephens just put it, how it all fits together, or I guess how the dominoes kind of fall, because for them to complete their work on the downtown strategic plan, they said within like three months, wouldn't we want to kind of wait until they've had these events so that we can use their information rather than perhaps reduplicate those efforts and, I wouldn't say waste the money, but we could use it for outreach that they are not doing, like the ordinance? So those are just my concerns. But absolutely, number one, indeed, and definitely, I think, an outreach, a workshop for sure.
Thank you. You brought up a good point, because I know you're also our representative on the DDA group. I like to call, I call it the downtown work group. I don't know, it's probably some type of name's going to come down the road, I don't know, but the downtown work group that I call it. So they are also looking at a non-motorized plan?
They're looking at the non-motorized plan, and much of their discussion hinged around, well, public outreach for sure, but they were concerned about the decisions that need to be made about the North Village, hinging upon sewer capacity, which hinges upon, I mean, there's so many things that have to line up, the new subdivision with the 65 units that's going in upstream and the sewer capacity. So in order for them to make decisions about downtown planning, strategic decisions which hinge upon the Northfield Village, it's just, it seems to me that there needs to be some really tight prioritization so that we don't, I wouldn't say flail around, but I mean just really step on each other's toes accidentally or waste money.
Agreed. So, Mr. Sloan, maybe you can take into that, take this into consideration, that if they are doing a non-motorized plan as part of that group, that obviously it's being done through McKenna also, so they would be coordinating this. So that was another point that I was, I may have not made clear, but a possibility that us doing a non-motorized plan in general could be delayed until that work, the work group actually gets something in place and possibly looking at the more rural areas for their, from their, just the suggestion. Mr. Zarzaki?
Thank you. Not having been at the last couple of meetings, I did listen to all the meetings, though, so I'm pretty well updated on what was going on, I'm pretty sure, but I agree, we need to go ahead with the general updates. The non-motorized, I believe, I agree with everybody here that there seems to be some duplication that might be going on with, you know, the DDA and even with parks and stuff like that at this point. That's something we might want to wait a little bit on and see what comes from those other groups first. The open space, it's a relatively new group. I don't know that they actually even have anything to present to us to put into it at this point. They're still trying to develop their documents at this point, what they're going to be putting together, so we may be jumping the gun on them a little bit, too. So I hate to say it, but let's not jump the gun on some of this stuff right away. Let's go ahead with the general updates and keep a very close eye on the other two, and when those start to, you know, condense down to where it's reasonable to us to look at putting them into the master plans and such, let's take it at that point. We could always add to the plan at any time. We don't have to wait for every five years to do that. You know, we can put an update into it when something, you know, gels together and is solid, and then say, okay, now we have a new motorized plan, let's add it to it at that point as an addendum if we have to. I mean, that might be the better way to do it than putting something in that's only partially done. It'd be better wait till it's completely gone through the other committees at that point.
Agreed. Mr. Iquinto?
The non-motorized plan has nothing to do with the DDA. They really don't have any aspects of that. It's not anything that would be part of the new downtown park as well. I mean, so the part of our Parks and Rec master plan that we put out last year was a non-motorized plan to unify all of the communities. And so, you know, if the first step in order to do any of that, you know, is, and again, is the only way to even apply for any funding of grants or anything like that is to have that non-motorized plan pathway, essentially the correct route to be able to put that in anywhere. So as the chairman of the Parks and Rec Committee, I would just ask this board to really consider that and to have it on here so that our planner could work on that and get even get started with that and maybe possibly, how long would something like that take, sir?
Well, the non-motorized plan, it could take a matter of a couple of months, depending on the scope. I think, though, because the downtown plan is underway, for this, it might be a matter of scheduling, where we might want to put it near the back of the general master plan schedule if it's included, just so that we leave enough time for the downtown plan to complete, and then when we start the non-motorized plan, we know what to pick up from, from the downtown plan, and then make sure that we provide the best value for that by using their finished product and building outward throughout the township. So to do the non-motorized plan, we might be looking at a two to three month timeframe within the master plan schedule, but we may put that later to dovetail off of what the downtown plan comes up with.
Okay.
Ms. Infante?
The point that I understood regarding the downtown development and the Northfield, and the Northfield Village and the non-motorized plan was that they understood the impact that their decisions would have on the future land use map, and that's, I think, how it came up. And they were also very interested in conducting public outreach to the townships, especially particularly north of us, because of those connections. So I understand exactly what you're saying, but that's, I mean, I'm just sort of reporting what they were talking about, and that they thought it was a very important thing to move forward with as part of their agenda. So I think it should be part of our agenda, but I think maybe we want to receive what they, or what your community also does, and that we should just really jump on the signs, for example, or the things that nobody else is doing that are paramount, like updating the plan, but it is very important.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Mr. Sloan, do you have some further thoughts on this before we continue on with this? Would you, is it, I have a couple of questions. Obviously, when you came up with your initial proposal that we have in front of us tonight, the general updates was $19,000. Obviously, if you were to look at doing a non-motorized plan, open space preservation plan, some type of strategic downtown plan, obviously, this initial figure of $19,000 to that include, obviously, your office time and research for those items. So in other words, if we were to reduce that, which we, it sounds like we're at a consensus like to hold off on the open space preservation plan, is that going to reflect, would that reflect the reduction in your general updates estimate?
Probably not. We would take the $2,000 out, but in terms of the general updates, we would at least have supportive language of open space preservation to the, you know, to the maximum extent that we can, at the very least, building on what the current master plan has. That would still be included in the general updates. So even though if there's no open space preservation plan per se, open space preservation will be addressed in the general updates.
Okay. How about, and the same question, I guess, would pertain to a $1,000 workshop. If we were to recommend that we were just going to do general updates, obviously, a workshop for doing general updates, which is already existing language changes, maps, so forth, data, would that work, this $1,000 for a workshop? Would that have any reduction based on, this is just an update, it's not like you're doing a lot of research, legwork, preparation for input on a lot of other things that now that we're looking at it are not going to have?
If the nature of the workshop changes, the price may change. If it was just like an open house or something synonymous to a public hearing, it might be something that is a little bit less, but if it's something where, if we're not doing a workshop, well, downtown plan is already doing their own workshops, so we wouldn't duplicate that, and if we didn't have a workshop about, say, non-motorized, but we may have a workshop regarding some of the new area plans that we're looking at. So for example, some of our interchange areas, we might want to have a workshop devoted to some of those interchange areas and the areas around them, just to kind of get a hot topic in the township, get people interested, and talk about something where there may be something imminent happen to it, based on, you know, external forces, whether it's the widening of US 23 or, you know, the regional economy improving, things like that.
Okay, so in your estimation, then, not much change on your proposal at this time? We're, I'm asking, basically, you wouldn't need to reflect another, or show us another proposal by next meeting? Am I correct in that?
Probably not.
Okay, thank you. Based on that, I would like to make a motion of recommending to the board of trustees the proposal by McKenna regarding the master plan review at the amount of $24,500, which would include the $19,000 on the general updates, $4,500 for the non-motorized plan, and a $1,000 per workshop?
Support.
If, motion supported by Mr. Iquinto, are there any questions on the motion? Well, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Mr. Zarzaki, yes? And Mr. Roman?
Yes. Excuse me. We'll move on to unfinished business, number 10B, discussion of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. Any pack received, basically, five, am I correct, Mr. Sloan?
That's correct.
Five zoning ordinance amendments. The two that we would like to discuss under the unfinished business happen to be, one is the public hearing signposting requirements, the other being Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay districts. Since these two items, the public hearing signposting was addressed by the commission in February of 2014, and the Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay district was also discussed by the planning commission in 2016, but further action needed to be processed, I'm guessing. It's more or less a housekeeping issue, am I correct, Mr. Sloan?
Certainly, the first one with the posting of signage is a housekeeping item. I think that was the general intent all along. It was just something that wasn't acted upon when it was recommended back in 2014. The Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay district, when that, when the text of the amendment was done in 2016, I think there was the heavy focus on getting the text right to make sure that everyone was in agreement, and then we would come back with the actual districts themselves, just to have kind of a two-stage process. And so the text was adopted, and that's included in the packet tonight, and what's also included are the most recent maps in 2016 that were, that were done to be picked up on once we came back to it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'll leave it to you to choose which, you know, you want to go, you want to discuss first, so, Mr. Sloan?
We can start with public notice signs. We can just go in order. Essentially, what this is, is a proposal to exempt conditional use permits from the requirement posed to public notice sign. from the requirement to post a public notice sign. And currently, it requires that if someone applies for a conditional use permit, then they have to put the public notice sign in their yard. The posting of public notice signs, many communities do that for rezonings and variances and things of that nature. There's no requirement in the Zoning Enabling Act, so this is strictly a local requirement. Some communities make people put signs for everything. Some communities don't require any signage at all and everywhere in between. So, there's no wrong way to do this. But the proposal back in twenty fourteen was to exempt special land uses from having to post a public notice sign in their yard. The neighbors within three hundred feet will still be mailed the notice, and that would still be noticed in the newspaper fifteen days in advance. So, those state mandated public hearing advertisements would still take place.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Sloan regarding this? Seeing none, I'd like to make motion that the Planning Commission recommend the amendment for the Board of Trustees' consideration.
Support.
Have a support by Mr. Iquino. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote again. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Iquino?
Yes.
Ms. Afante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Roman?
Yes. Mr. Iquino?
One of the questions I have, again, things that have fallen through the cracks before, and I'm not saying, but, so whose responsibility is it to make sure that this gets forwarded to the township board?
Uh, Ms. Bur.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. Thank you.
And also, if we are doing a slew of other amendment proposals where some of these later ones require public hearings, because this has been a few years since it's been to the board, we may also want to consider whether to have another public hearing on these amendments if we're doing some others at the same time. So, that's something we can circle back to later.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Sloan, would you like to discuss the Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay?
So, in twenty sixteen, there were some text amendments proposed in the zoning ordinance, and they're actually in the munich code version right now. They were adopted on July twelfth of twenty sixteen. And this is an overlay district in the SR one and SR two areas on the waterfront along Whitmore Lake and Horseshoe Lake. And most of the regulations there are for reduced setbacks for structures along the lake. And the purpose is to reduce the number of variances that come before the Township Zoning Board of Appeals. So, in the long run, this will lead to fewer variances and a little bit more redevelopment along the lake without the need to have to come to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, there was discussion and debate back in twenty sixteen of which setbacks would be the right ones. And I know that what the Planning Commission had recommended, I think, was a little bit different than what the board had approved. But what's in front of you this evening in munich code is the approved version. And now that it is approved, the next step in the process is to actually map these overlay districts so that they can take full effect. The last time we were working on this in mid-two thousand sixteen, we have a couple of versions here, one for Whitmore Lake, one for Horseshoe Lake, where we had mapped the boundary at that time. But there had been, there had been no action on the boundary, and I don't know if there was, or whether the public hearing included the boundary of the, of the district itself or if the public hearing was just for the text. So, once we're in a general agreement on the format of the boundary, then the next step, I think, would be to schedule this as part of a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Any questions for Mr. Sloan? Mr. Iquino?
So, if you look at the boundary for the Whitmore Lake area, I see on the western side, we start at our border and come south, go ahead and address the peninsula, and continue, and stop just past Harbor Cove. So, why are we stopping there and then picking back up? It looks like it would be just north of my property on the north end where it picks back up. What is the reason that we're not continuing that area of the lake frontage there?
I think the purpose was that the area in between is the Whitmore Lake Downtown District. There's the, there's the Whitmore Lake Waterfront District, and then there's a little part of it that's Whitmore Lake North Village District. And I think, off the top of my head, I don't know the regulations of those districts, but I think the intent was to maintain the existing standards for those Whitmore Lake districts. And then, once it picks up to the far north, that's when it goes back into the SR one district, I believe, or SR two, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, again, the reason is because that's part of the waterfront district?
That's correct.
All right. And that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was my understanding also. Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Stephens?
Please. Thank you. So, the overlay district was proposed in part because there was a concern about the number of variances being applied for on waterfront lots?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. I've been on the ZBA for a couple of years, and I think we've only had one or two waterfront lot variances that I can recall. It is certainly not something that we see very often. My concern with reducing the setbacks is, are we going to have a problem, then, with lot coverage? Because that doesn't change, correct? The lot coverage would remain the same. But if you're reducing the setbacks, then you're also increasing lot coverage. Is that then going to lead to variance requests for lot coverage?
That's a good point. It could. If, if, if people are still going to propose large structures, you know, inevitably, it could lead to lot coverage variance requests. The way, the best way to avoid those would be to continually turn them down, which puts the ZBA in a difficult position, but that would be one of the defenses against that. I think in some cases also where there may be structures that are not considered lot coverage, that people may want to build out, like if it's a deck or steps or, I'll have to look at the definition of lot coverage to see if it includes decks, but there may be some non-lot coverage structures that people would want to build where they wouldn't count as lot coverage, but yet they would be subject to these new setbacks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? Make a motion for the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing on this item. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquino. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, you have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iquino?
Yes.
Ms. Afante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Roman?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we'll go to item eleven. It's new business. It's actually more proposed zoning ordinance amendments, but these are ones that have previously, to my knowledge, not been provided to the Planning Commission. So, Mr. Sloan, I'll let you select which of the three you'd like to start with.
Okay. Thank you. I'll start with the memo regarding open and unroof terraces, patios, and porches. This one is probably the most complex because there's no specific recommendation for an amendment. Just raising the topic as an issue and something for the Planning Commission to discuss and, and, and address with a recommendation. One of the items that comes up in the exempt structures listed in section thirty-six dash ninety-eight G one of the zoning ordinance is that it has a number of structures that are exempt from the area placement and height regulations of the zoning ordinance. Some of them are, are things that are common that, you know, don't cause any kinds of issues, like sidewalks, most of the time, flagpoles, hydrants, things of that nature. And one of the items that comes up here in the very first items on the list are open and unroof terraces, patios, porches, and steps. And it also has awnings in there as well. And for something like steps, I think it's most of the time fairly reasonable for accessibility purposes that steps usually don't cause a, a large problem. But open and unroof terraces, patios, porches, and even awnings, there's no limit there on how high off grade they can be, whether they can be second story, how far from the house or the main building they can project. And so, this came up as a, as a topic that I know that it needs to be addressed, but we didn't have anything specific in terms of how high off the ground to exempt a structure or to perhaps take some of the items off the list here. Many communities regulate them many different ways. Some communities, in this case, do exempt them. But for a waterfront community, it can be a little bit complicated, especially if someone builds something large and they say that's not a, you know, it's not a deck or it's not a building or anything like that. They'll call it a patio or, or something on this list to describe what it is. So, I think that I'd like to have a discussion in terms of if there are any modifications that we could propose that would make it, you know, a little bit easier to help with the administration of this, to limit the size of the structure, the height of these exempt structures, and then tying down so that they don't start to get out of hand or someone try to, you know, take it to the nth degree in terms of what they can try to build.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. I do have a bit of background on this one. The Planning Commission, and I, I don't recall what year or how long ago the Planning Commission did look at this some time ago, and actually, it was due to the, the lots, the narrower lots or the lots basic, more or less around the lakes that had homes that were either at or on a side setback or a front setback. And the concern was about them putting steps or a front porch on the home, not so much structures. And when the Planning Commission reviewed this, I believe the part about open and uncovered terraces, patios, porches, and steps was added, although I believe, I thought at that time it would probably not be a great addition to this paragraph because it caused more confusion. It's kind of like a train wreck, and it happened, I guess, possibly. But, Mr. Iquino, am I correct in, in my recollection on this?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have anything further to add?
I was just going to ask about the history and mention what I recall, which is exactly what you did, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, as I was looking at this, it's basically, this paragraph is telling you what's exempt from area placement and height regulations. So, it's, it's basically giving you a list as to the things that somebody can have in a front side, even a rear setback, I'm guessing. I, I don't, I don't know if that pertains. But, so somehow, through the history of this, the open and unroof terraces got added, patios, porches, and steps, which really, there's not clear definition in either the language or definitions. And it can lead people to assume or have a definition of those items that may not fit what they, what, what the township is, is basically trying to discuss here. So, one option might be to eliminate the, the language part of open and unroof terraces, patios, porches, and steps, possibly awnings. And I believe in the Michigan Building Code, I don't, I don't think, and it's been a little bit of time for me, but I don't think that steps or means of egress scenarios are affecting a setback. And Mr. Sloan may or may not know that, but, in other words, if you had two, three steps in elevation up to an egress door, those are permitted by the building code in a setback area because, obviously, it's, it's a means of egress. It's a health safety issue. I don't see a problem with any of that. I'd really like to see those details dealt with either by the, the building official, if it had to, the zoning administrator. But I, I don't think it would, it would probably come to that. But I would like to hear other people's thoughts on possible resolution. Mr. Iquino? No?
You're covering it, and I agree with what you're suggesting.
Thank you. Any, any other commissioners?
You're correct on the stairways.
Thank you. It's been a while, so I'm glad I'm.
Well, I'm a licensed builder, but I'm also an ICC Special Inspector. And egress steps are health, life safety issues, and they are allowed in the setback areas, especially if they are for the primary egress of the structure, so. But they do have to beat, of course, either IBC or, or the residential building code requirements, so.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Stephens?
Yes. I think it's striking that the ordinance does not define deck or patio or porch. So, that certainly needs to be addressed, and I think a height above grade should be addressed. I think anything at grade is, I think the use of something at grade is no different than something that's twenty-four inches above grade or eighteen inches above grade. If you're, so, we need to think through if, if we want to do a height above grade in our differentiation between structures and where they can be. And then I was just looking back at the, this overlay district. It says where the lot does not comply with the minimum required lot width. This is the, the proposed overlay. The narrowest side yard should not be less than five feet or fifteen percent of the lot width, whichever is greater. So, my concern would be is if we have stairs on that five-foot setback, does, is that going to cause someone to, how are you going to maintain any, if there's a strip of grass between the steps and the property boundary? Are you going to have to trespass onto your neighbor's property to gain access to your lot? It was just a, a thought that I had as you were talking that.
Right. Mr. Zarzaki?
The, the code has a specific requirement that stairs do have to have a specific amount of what they would call a landing at the bottom of the stairs that is accessible. So, you could not have a stair that actually ended right at the property line. You would have to have equivalent of a, I think it's a thirty-two inch by thirty-two inch area at the bottom of the stair that was still on your property.
Okay.
So, the stair would have to be turned in a specific way. It'd be difficult to maintain that for cutting grass or something like that. But the building code does address specific things like that.
That's thirty-six inches, by the way.
Or thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Yeah. They keep changing it. And also, as far as definitions of what is a deck and patio, that's in the building codes. The residential building code does define what is considered a deck, elevated deck versus a patio or, so that we'd have to be very careful that we follow the building code requirements as far as how we define some of the stuff. Because there are railing requirements and everything else. And Michigan has issued new building specifications for decks, and they are very strict on, on deck requirements right now. They have a whole manual specifically for decks right now.
Is that a construction requirement or a zoning requirement? Because.
It's a life safety building requirement.
So, that's, it's a structural issue rather than a placement issue?
Well, it's considered structural, but it's something our code enforcement officer has to be cognizant of and has to enforce.
At the building permits?
It's a building, building code, basically.
Well, even in the existing building codes, in the existing building portion of the laws, he would have to make sure that existing decks comply.
Ms. Stephens, you bring up a, a very good point. You said that although the use of an at-grade. You said that although the use of an at-grade item doesn't change if you elevate it, but I think when all this language was introduced, it led people to believe that they could place a structure in a side setback. So to me, to me looking at this, I like to use a scenario. Somebody wants to put a deck that is supported by posts made of wood in their side yard setback or front yard setback, whether or not it's attached to the house or not. To me, that is encroachment of a structure on the setback, which I don't think should be allowed. Although if you change that scenario of a deck to poured concrete, flatwork, or brick pavers, or tile outside in that same area, I don't see where that would be a problem because it's not a per se structure in the setback. But it also can pose a problem as far as drainage on that particular lot and drainage to an adjacent lot to that person. So that's also another enforcement monster that would be created for the township enforcement or building official to deal with. So I look at these things to keep them as simple as possible because you don't want a huge extent of interpretation. You don't want an enforcement issue for the township either. But basically what I think this is referring to, my opinion is that the idea of this paragraph is to tell you what certain things are allowed to be in a side or front setback. I think when we start getting into structures and then allocating heights and what, you know, have discrepancy in what a porch or patio or terrace is from person to person, it becomes unmanageable. So, Mr. Aquino, did you have a comment?
No, sir.
No? Okay, I thought you were raising your hand. Any other questions, comments? So perhaps, Mr. Sloan, what do you suggest at this point? I really don't want to get into allowing structures, in this paragraph, allowing structures in a setback. I don't think that was the intent of the article or the section. So hearing that, I mean, I suggested elimination of some of the open-ended terms or undefined terms, or do you want to leave those and go into more definition? I mean, I don't see a great, I don't, I wouldn't want to see a lot of effort gone into this because I don't think it's, the whole thing is allowing structures in the setback. I don't think that's the intent.
I don't think so either.
Okay.
I just want to limit the amount of, you know, debate between a property owner that may want to take it to the extreme and a township that's, you know, just trying to enforce what I think we think the general intent is. That, you know, we discussed here a couple of different scenarios, one of which was a raised deck that we all agree should not be in a setback. Another is if someone was doing flatwork near, you know, near the setback or in the setback, there's more of a question there because it does exempt sidewalks. You know, one of the extremes would be instead of a raised deck, if they did a raised patio and just, you know, did blocks or something like that. I think certainly anything above grade should be, should not be exempt, and, you know, it's debatable whether some at-grade structures as described there should be exempt.
I agree. And again, the, it says that, you know, getting back, I want to clarify, am I seeing, I'm seeing sidewalks and private driveways as those are exempt, so you can have those?
Yes.
So, okay, just to make clear, because I thought you stated the opposite. But could I suggest that you do a revision on this paragraph and present it to us at next meeting?
Sure.
Based on, I think we're in agreement of what our intent and purpose of this article is. Anyone disagree with the commissioners? Ms. Stephens?
I would only say that my reading of this and the definition of structure per the ordinance, a structure is anything that has a fixed location on the surface of the ground or water, that a paved patio would have to meet the setback standards because it's defined as a structure. Is that really what we're intending to do?
I would say, my opinion is, is that if it's at grade, I don't have an issue with it. If it doesn't cause a drainage problem, I don't have an issue with it. Mr. Sloan might think differently. I don't want it to apply to an elevated scenario of what you just mentioned.
That's why I think going back to, we need some pretty tight definitions in the ordinance.
Okay, so how about on this one? What do you see, what is your opinion, you being on the ZBA? I'm offering up elimination of some loose definition terms, or what, is there something else that you may suggest?
It's that last sentence. Anything constructed, erected, placed, or planted or allowed to grow shall conform to the provisions of the section of H. I don't have H in front of me.
Oh, yeah, that's where it stops because we were working in subsection G.
Okay.
I think subsection H is the clear vision zone triangle.
Okay.
So regardless of what's exempt, they still have to meet the clear vision requirements.
I would be concerned about hard surfaces up, especially on our lakefront lots, and the drainage, the drainage problems that that would create.
Okay, but you already can have hard-surfaced sidewalks and driveways.
Yeah.
It's already allowed.
Yeah.
So if there is a drainage issue, there's, that's another enforcement issue, I guess, I want to say. I don't, I mean, possibly, Mr. Sloan, we could add, so add on to this paragraph briefly that as long as there's no grading drainage detriment created on the lot or an adjacent lot due to the above. Is that something to that effect, very simple? Would that help out? Okay. And I'm just trying to put out a suggestion there to clarify this. Would that be satisfactory, Ms. Stephens?
Yes, certainly something saying that you, you know, all stormwater runoff will be managed on site. You're not going to push it onto your neighbors or into the.
And there may be another section in the ordinance that deals with grading drainage and maybe possibly just a simple reference to that, Mr. Sloan?
Yeah, we can work up some language. I've worked in other communities that deal with the stormwater issue with impervious services, so we can come back at the next meeting with some proposed language and then take it up at that time and see if that meets what we're looking for here.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I was concerned that we were allowing structures here where I didn't think that they should be, so I think we have a consensus that we're all in agreement that it's basically mentioning things you can have and so they don't pose a problem. So, okay. So, Mr. Sloan, you'll have something for us next time on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, which one would you like to look at next?
We can go to the Proposed Land Division Ordinance Amendments for application fees. This one is pretty straightforward. This is an unusual amendment. First of all, it's in the land division ordinance, not in the zoning ordinance, but I would recommend amending the general ordinance in the same fashion where there's a public hearing and there's a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. Even though I think that for a general ordinance, I'm not sure that the Board of Trustees needs a recommendation from the Planning Commission, I think handling the ordinance recommendations from the Planning Commission makes the flow a little smoother. And this is a fairly easy amendment. In subsection A6, the land division ordinance prescribes a dollar amount for a fee for a land division, and we recommend striking that and just referring to an application fee to be paid at the time of submittal. There's a few different reasons for that. Number one is that the board is the body that sets application fees, just like any other application fee, and they do it either with the budget or through amending the fee schedule from time to time. So that's always subject to change, and it's easier to change a fee schedule than it is to amend an ordinance. And you'll find yourself amending your ordinance every time you want to adjust the fees, which is not a good practice. It'll cost the township more money in the long run. And then the second one is that typically an ordinance shouldn't have a dollar amount for anything unless you're talking about something like penalties and fines where if someone has a civil infraction, you put in the ordinance at, say, $500 so that when you go to court and the judge wants to see your ordinance and you're charging them $500, it's not some random amount, it's something that's actually been adopted into the ordinance. So short of anything being required for a penalty to hold up in court, we don't recommend having a dollar amount.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sloan on this? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission schedule a public hearing on this item.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Aquino. Mr. Zarzaki, can you roll call vote, please?
Mr. Aquino?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Roman?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, next, Mr. Sloan, Little Free Libraries?
Yes, this is a use, several months ago, somebody had proposed putting a Little Free Library stand in their front yard next to the sidewalk, and it's obviously not in the zoning ordinance for this particular type of use, and so we have to treat it like any other structure where someone's putting a structure in a front yard. Typically, those are not approved, and unfortunately, this is not a use that was approved. And so in looking at this, we also looked at what a Little Free Library was. Many of the people I asked knew what they were. I didn't, so I had to look it up, and it's quite impressive, the type of use it is. It has an international following, and it's internationally recognized where these book stands are all over the world and people put them in their front yards, and people borrow books, put the books back. And it's a unique type of use that is fairly uncommon in zoning ordinances, but on their website, they had one case of some community in the Midwest, maybe it was in Kansas somewhere, but the community actually amended its ordinance to allow the Little Free Library, and so they had some bullet point items that we've incorporated into the proposed text here. And many of the things that we put in here were things that we had come up with on our own so that, you know, if someone were to take this to an extreme degree, what could we do to limit them? So we do that by the height of the stand, the size of the box, you know, how much can be covered in signage, making sure that it's not an obstruction to any type of traffic, and that it receive a land use permit, just so that, you know, if someone wants to put one up, we review the plans, make sure that they're complying with the ordinance. So even though it's a little more than half a page of regulations, really it's intended to, you know, allow the use, but making sure that it doesn't become anything that's a nuisance or too big or anything like that. So this is the proposed language that we think would fit for most any types of Little Free Library stands that would be proposed.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sloan on the proposal? I see, I just want to make mention, I see also that these are not allowed in a setback and kind of pertains to our last conversation.
Yes.
So, just as a clarification, but I looked through it, I was pretty, I was amazed at how much language for this. I was also not very familiar with it. So there you have it. Any other questions for Mr. Sloan? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion for the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing on this item.
Support.
Support by Mr. Aquino. Any discussions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote again. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Aquino?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Passes?
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, that moves us to the approval of preceding minutes of April 19th at the regular meeting. Everybody receive copy of the minutes? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes is presented.
I support. Any questions on the motion? And dispense with reading?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I did see on the second page, second column, it, the actual, it says dispense with, I believe you got to add reading. That's it, that's all I saw. So seeing no questions, we can vote on that as a vocal vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Final call to the public. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Planning Commission? If so, step on up, state your name and address, speak directly into the microphone and so everyone can hear you.
Sure.
And you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Bobbi, nine four eight eight, Main Street here in Chris. Just got a friend who lives in Bed, in the suburb. Love it. And I guess the only suggestion I have is some of the things you talk about, you might be good at having a TV, because when you talk about zoning and stuff, kind of sitting back there, it's hard to get a visual on the overlays. And again, I'm new, so I'm just walking on this. Thanks for all your hard work. It's hard to do all this litigation and work, so I'm a veteran myself, you know, a master's degree in parcel recreation, so I'm doing a volunteer sometimes. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing none others, we will go to comments from the commissioners. Mr. Aquino?
I do really like Tom's suggestion. I think it'd be really appropriate if, you know, screens today were, just like we have it projected to the TV, TV land, if we put a large screen there or here where when we are dealing with an item, and again, a lot of times we, you know, we set up easels and different things like that, it would be tremendously more professional and more visual for all if we did do that and it was shown up onto the screens. I definitely would be supportive of that, and I believe would come in very handy for township board meetings as well, for probably the ZBA meetings, definitely for our meetings. So whoever is the appropriate person to mention that to the township board, I would be very much in favor of that.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki?
Well, I agree with you. That was one of my thoughts, that we should definitely invest a little bit in some audiovisual aids for all the different boards and for the public that attends the meetings to allow them to see some of these maps and details that we're looking at. The costs have come down drastically over the years, and we don't even need screens nowadays. We can project right onto the walls half the time, and it's usually, you know, more than adequate. So I definitely agree, we should approach the board that way and add a small item to the budget if we can.
Thank you. Ms. Stephens?
I agree, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Sloan for his work on the amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Infante.
I know from teaching, there are very low-cost projector systems where you just place the text that you're working off of and it projects right behind you, and they're very, very inexpensive, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you're watching.
Yeah, speak up.
I was in Dona, I built a lot of front displays, called Best Buy, for $200. It's a good one. Usually comes out of IT budget and be spread across the board of all the different committees, and it'll certainly pay for itself. And watching on a TV, when you talk about language, I know from the tech side and what we have here, just looking, you can zoom in on your language, sort of identifying a paragraph or something from a public standpoint. Now, or who's ever been watching TV, now see what they're saying. Or split screen or an Apple TV or something like that, I guess. All right, well, see y'all. If you don't stay too late, I gotta go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excuse me. Myself, I have no further comments. Like to announce the next meeting, regular meeting of the Planning Commission to be May 17th, 2017. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I have support by myself. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.